Alright, it's seven o'clock. Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order, is that okay?
Yep.
Okay, jointly call this meeting to order.
Yep.
As the planning and zoning in city council, so let's go ahead and do a roll call.
Nathan was calling up planning and zoning. Brian Greedy, Ward two.
Strategists, Ward one and planning and zoning.
Sean. Definitely Isaac Neer.
Ed Wilson, planning and zoning.
Eddie Oyam, Ward one.
Ryan, sending Ward two and planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning, Danny Martin.
Perfect, so all present and accounted for. Um, let's go ahead and do the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve the agenda.
We'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Call in favor.
Alright.
Aye.
Motion passed. Old business.
Can I make a suggestion, please? Just for tonight, when you make a motion, can you say your name?
Oh.
Cause there's so many here. I mean, there's a lot of this. Okay.
Okay. So, the first business, old business is Tony Lee with proposed sewer main for his property on
It'd be 501 Third Street is where we need the, the remedy.
That. What are you proposing?
We have the
I'm getting it up.
I give it over.
Here's just a second, I'm getting it up there. Hurry in, hurry in.
I can give a verbal. Um, basically, the existing sewer line from the old school and the old gym runs south to Zedros.
Yeah, south, south, south.
Currently it runs
Yeah, behind the, behind the old gym.
Behind the old gym. And about twenty percent of it's collapsed. We've been basically jetting it out four times a year. Um, it's, yes, it's a joint line with the school district and ourselves, but they aren't willing to actually fix it. They don't wanna fix it. And the more research I did, the year, there's actually supposed to be a sewer line that goes up the alley between Needros and Saint Olaf. Um, it is not there. So, that would be, at to my understanding, the best way to remedy this is to get that sewer line up the alley that has, it's on the city planes. And then I would like to add a manhole so that we can fix the old gas station sewer and then also have another sewer connection so that if we take out the loading dock, we could then also add. So what we're proposing is we would come out, we have to jog north out of the old school about eight feet. Then we would head west. That'd be right at a hundred and forty-eight feet. I was originally proposing a manhole where you see the letter C uh, so that that's where we could do our tie-ins for the old school proposed and the old gas station. Uh, in conversations with other, other people, uh, the manhole location sounds like would be preferred to be put in the alley uh, for elevation purposes, if that was the case. Uh, it would kinda have to be towards, that's two, the old gas station is 225 Saint Olaf. We would wanna be on the west property line of 225 to be able to have enough grade to go down the alley correctly. Um, the biggest knock on, on any of this is there is a ton of fiber optic up that alley. Um, and I mean a lot. Um, so, that's why I originally proposed to actually talking to Mike and crowding it to the north of the alley so that we could bypass. There's four, I believe they're T1 lines, there's four bundles of fiber optic that go from Alliance to Erickson, Bell Rapids. I'm told it feeds everything east. Um, yeah, and A is an existing manhole. So, uh, where B is located is very, very close of where the existing sewer line attaches for the old gas station. Um, it is an inch and a half line that gets fed into, they don't know if it was an eight or a ten inch takeoff on the sewer main. Um, so you can imagine how that old gas station actually flows with an inch and a half sewer line.
Have you had locates for the?
I did do locates, yeah.
How far to the south of these, south side of the alley or the lines? I know it's a bag with the markings.
There was four lines there. I'll just get out and show you if it's easier than trying to guess the name. So there's a, uh, is it a two foot by three foot box here and a two foot by three foot box there? So the mains all come up, yes, because at the bottom of this pole is another two foot by three foot fiber optic box. So we could, like I said, we truly could come up the middle, put like a manhole approximately here and then we could still plan to come over, leave a branch, so if we did do our addition and then I would actually um, so the bathroom is actually about right here, so it'd be a pretty easy come out and attach and then bring it around to a manhole here and then bring it back.
So theoretically, the only time you have to mess with the communication lines is when you do the service lines?
Yeah.
If the trench, if the trench is down the middle, it should be deep enough and it's in the center, close, so there should be enough.
Yeah, and that's when you look at this plans, that's what was supposed to have been done. Is it in this, late fifties, early sixties is when the Hereon Company was hired to do the sewer lines in Baltic and handwritten drawings that Bud had shown me, there's supposed to be a manhole, actually, the manhole is supposed to be up here. And there was supposed to have been a sewer line put up. It was, it's, it's not there, it doesn't exist.
Hey Tony, grab it, I mean, it's about to fall.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Where do the fiber optic schools once they get to the box at the top of the alley?
The this one goes straight through.
Under the buildings?
Underneath, yeah. That one I'm told, I don't remember which town that feeds. And then the one that's on this side feeds us, the school. Here, I know, but there's, there's, there's a hundred and forty-four wires in that bundle.
You don't wanna cut the list, I can just tell you.
Correct. Whoops, did I use?
Sorry, no, I didn't.
No, that's planned.
Um, so yeah, the thing, like I said, well, I did have it located once upon a time with video, so our sewer line here comes out, comes around, dumps in. Because there is no sewer down in Saint Olaf and there's no sewer here, so, because then the restaurant comes, they actually go right to that manhole. But I don't know the rules of how close we'd have to be to a manhole or if it requires that.
Well,
Two four hundred.
Four hundred feet.
Well, there could be, there could be four hundred feet.
Four hundred feet, Samantha.
Then I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure we're good there.
Well, okay, so first thing, as soon as you put multiple buildings on it, you have to have an eight inch main to the point where everything ties off the eight inch main. Um, so technically where your B is would have to be a manhole by state regulations.
We know where B is, it's an eight or a ten inch takeoff already into the city.
It don't matter. All new regulations, you have to have a manhole there. It, it don't matter what's there now. If you put this in, first thing, as soon as there's a main in there, you have to get an engineer no matter what. So, for elevations and everything, but there has to be a manhole at B and then it has to be a straight shot to a manhole. If you change directions, there has to be a manhole there to change directions. And then you can only have one business on a six inch line. So, you can't wrap multiple buildings off of one six inch sewer service.
So that's why I was proposing to put it on our property.
It doesn't matter whose property you put it on. That's the state regulations as well as our regulations.
So, my question then is, who is liable for the sewer from point B where it's supposed to already be in the alley?
Well, so if you're not getting put in, um, several sewers have never been put in in several towns across, not just off the border, but any state you wanna go to because things change as they're putting them in. And things get eliminated, so just because there was a hand drawing, drawing of a line that they thought they were gonna put in, at some point in time, they decided that they didn't put it in. So, if all that's there now is what's there. So there's nothing that says that line had to be installed in nineteen fifty-four or whatever, okay? So, with that being said, if there was stubout put in there with no manhole, I don't know, but even any sewer has ever dug up, anytime you got anything over a six inch line coming out, there's a manhole. There's not Ys for branches to pick up main streets or alleys that don't have a manhole.
We know that there's a, like I said, it's eight or a ten inch at B. We know it's already there. It's not something that would have to be.
So, our
Now, there are engineers here.
Now that our engineer is here, he can, can, he can feed in, you missed it a little bit there, Justin, but see.
We kept him very busy this afternoon.
Yeah. Um, talking about sewer, um, in nineteen fifty-something on a hand drawing deal, there was a sewer that ran down an alley, never got installed. Happens all the time, even today's present day and time, it changes. Um, proposing to put a sewer in for picking up this multiple buildings basically at some point in time. Um, B, he's got gone on there as a Y, he says there's a eight or a ten inch stubout, but there's no manhole there currently.
Okay.
No matter what happens, the manhole has to go there to put a main up the street.
Even though we're within the four hundred feet?
Okay, the four hundred feet is maximum.
Okay, but A, there is a manhole at A.
Yep.
And it's at, like I said, it's, well, it'd be a third, fourth of a block.
It don't matter.
If you're running a naked ten inch, even just for your long-term maintenance on that line, I would highly recommend a manhole.
Well, it's required.
That's why we were putting still a manhole on behind 225.
But if you have a blockage on your downstream there, which is likely where you'll have your problem on that connection with that manhole there, everything will be sealed and there'll be a lot less, for what you'll pay for a manhole in there now.
Oh, there's six grand a pop.
Yep, you'll be a, you'll be ahead in the future.
Well, we adapt the Sioux Falls code and anytime, anything bigger than a six inch branch is off, you have to have a manhole no matter what.
Yep.
So.
So you're saying there has to be three manholes?
You, to do what you got drawn there, you would have that manhole at B, a manhole where you turn the corner and then a manhole at C.
Unless you ran it straight up and you could run a line straight up and you can curve your
You're gonna run your sewer system.
Building, so then you have to have a manhole at the bottom, one at the top. And your six inch service line, you can put forty-fives on and bend, but you can't do that.
So we can go straight up the alley?
Yeah.
No manholes?
No, you have to.
Why do I need a manhole? Because you said greater than six, so I'm not gonna connect anything.
So if you're gonna put in one six inch service to feed your one building.
So nobody has a six inch service up there.
Doesn't matter, it's the new requirements, any commercial building that's as big as your building has to have six inch sewer service.
Okay, so I got my six inch coming down, I was just, you just said I could Y in a six inch, so I just leave it a two manhole.
Yep, yep.
So I need one manhole at B.
You need, you would not need a manhole at any place if you run a six inch service just to your business, but every hundred feet, you gotta have a clean hole.
And if there's an expansion?
Then you can't tap off that, you have to put, another line would have to be put in.
So it's kind of a do it now or do it later?
If, if, if you wanna get a different sewer put in, yes.
For existing needs or for future planning?
No, right now I got sewage in the basement at Redford, so I'm gonna later start pumping it out or something, so.
Okay. Where's the sewage?
In the basement of the old school.
The basement of the old school.
So, the, under the gymnasium fills up first and then it, once they get filled up, then it actually backs up and does. Yeah, it's not very great. Yeah. So, but again, from what you just said, if I come up with a six inch, I can Y off to accommodate 225 without a manhole and I could go to the top of the alley and connect to the old school.
But, no, you cannot hook the other business into that same six inch service, you'd have to have two services.
You can Y into a eight inch.
Eight inch, and then you gotta have manholes. You can't Y it, two services, two businesses off of one six inch service.
So hey, does this have to be engineered because the nature?
Yeah, well, if he just puts in a sewer service, no, it does not. If he puts a manhole in a main, then yes, it's gotta be engineered.
Are you working with a company right now to?
I know who's working with, uh, well, I got a quote from Ed and then, um, Jack Intringer and I was waiting for it's like McGovern.
So would it make more sense for you to get those quotes and figure out which direction you wanna go or what's the, what's the?
I can share with you why I'm bucking on this.
I know how much I lost.
Okay.
I, we, our company gave him a price and that price was to put the manhole at the bottom, the eight inch line, the manhole at the top and then run just the one serp. So it was to put a, where the black car is there, it was to put a manhole, center of the alley, straight, south of the black car from B up and then run a service all the way around to pick up the school at B, the old school at B. And two years ago, right?
Just about a year.
Year ago, it was just over a hundred thousand dollars.
Hundred and sixty thousand.
Okay, so a little bit more, but I didn't see the asphalt prices, so I don't know, I didn't know.
So, what I'm gonna say is if I'm picking up the tab, just like in Lakes County, then I should have the authority that if somebody else wants to add on to this, I can charge them an accident.
Yes, you can, because it would be your service, it'd be your pipe, so if any one of the other lots wanted to hook onto it, yes, you would have that. The only way they could have honed to it is with your permission and at whatever you just didn't fit at the time.
If the pipe was acceptable.
If it's an eight inch main. So if you're running up to the top, set the manhole up there.
To the top, it does not work for elevation.
Or?
Uh, it would not work to put the manhole at the top for if any of those houses ever wanted to attach, because I can promise you going south is not a good situation, uh, even if like someday one.
Well, the, the main, the main at B is like twelve or thirteen foot deep if I remember correctly, right?
Yeah, that's.
Okay, and the hill goes uphill the entire way.
A lot.
Yes, so you could put that manhole anyplace on there and have, it'd just be a taller manhole.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I mean.
You would end up with almost fifteen to seventeen feet deep manhole at the top of it.
But, you could put it, so, but if you ran to the top of the alley and then when the school's got problems because you make it so that the sewer doesn't back up into your building no more, somehow pulls it off because.
Yeah, I would just abandon the, the other.
So you abandon that pipe there, well then when their sewer backs up to where they have to do something, then when they wanna hook to your sewer pipe, then yes, you would be able to charge them a hookup fee or whatever at the time. Otherwise, they'd have to fix it where it's twenty some plus feet deep coming down the hill towards West Needros.
Yeah, yeah, it's over, it's it's almost twenty-seven feet deep.
I know.
Get to the line. At its south.
At that highest point.
Right, because of the drop in elevation and.
Yeah.
Yep.
That would be your best bet, because the cost to put the eight inch pipe in or the six inch pipe is minimal dollars. The manholes, yes, you gotta pay for the manholes, but if you're running, if you wanna tie your gas station into it and you're running two six inch pipes up, well now your, your cost goes back up again. So, in reality, you would be better off putting the manhole in the manhole and then.
What about putting a manhole right behind 225? Or you're saying I can't do that?
You can put the manhole, you could put the manhole basically wherever you want it. You would just have a longer service up to the, to your building.
And you're saying I have to have separate, with 225, I call it loading dock and 501?
Yes, they have to have separate services. Just as an example, a duplicate, unless it's ruled that it can't be sold separately halves, has to have two separate services. So it's no different than with businesses.
That's not a six inch line.
Well, but commercials require you have six inch, residential is four inch, so that's the difference, but that's the minimum, so.
So, is this conversation to get approval on a permit to do this or what are we deciding?
He's trying to find out what he can do, so from this point basically is, the recommendation is to, guidance would be to get an engineer to do your eight inch main is your best bet. And decide where your best point to put your manhole is at that time. And then you would have to come back and get a easement or whatever to run that, Justin, right, to run that sewer down that right away alley, the city would just give him a easement or whatever to put the pipe in there.
Yeah, that'd be the right.
So, that's where you'd be at.
The, again, on record then, we would maintain, I call it the ownership then of who attaches to that.
Yep, it'd be your serps. The city would have no jurisdiction over the maintenance of it or anything, that'd be all, all yours. Yep, no, but I'm just saying that you would have full ownership of it.
And we would just run up whatever the stubout is.
Yep.
It's ten inch, then we'll run the ten inch up too, cause we ain't here to redo that branch.
Well, you actually would redo that branch because you have to literally put a manhole where B is. So you, you would not have that branch, you, you'd have your new pipe coming into a structure there. And then the only time the city would ever have anything to do with your service there would be no different than any other business, if the city comes in and does a street project and they replace the sewer main coming down the street, that's the city's, then they would come through and redo it and then that'd be the only time they'd do anything with your service. And that would be if that street ever got there.
Well, it's to maintain the line.
He would have to maintain the line.
Well, then that, that should be in the easement agreement, yeah.
Yep.
And what's interesting, Tony, is that an easement agreement like that would normally provide that it runs with the land, which means that when you sell your property, both the benefits and the burdens of that would go with the property, so whoever's awarded from you would need to.
Right, we're.
Okay, perfect.
We had plenty of that on lumberyard.
Okay.
There's a, a potential that in the future it may have an impact on the old gym. Should the school be invited?
There's no concern there.
I am dealing with that.
It's, oh, they have.
Their issue, their issue's hilarious.
Yeah, because they have a service and their issue's not gonna go away and they're gonna have to fix it eventually.
They're still gonna have the same issue they had before. Actually, they're technically gonna have less of an issue if you're.
They're gonna have more issue because they don't have enough flow to keep that.
And it's gonna be worse and then it's gonna back up and then it's gonna cause problems.
If the school would've worked with them, tried and fixed the original service, this wouldn't be an issue, really.
True statement.
You know?
Because it's the same thing, you, so back when this was done, things were way different. Regulations and rules.
By hand, first off, I want everybody to think about that one first.
Yeah, it was done by.
It was dug by hand going south through twenty-seven feet of.
And probably all this.
Wow. Well, the gym was built by hand too, there was no.
Right.
Yeah, that's a prehistory.
So that's where we're at, we good with that?
I am good.
Okay.
So we'll get, we'll get people involved.
I appreciate you bringing up the school and thank you for giving us the historical knowledge on that, because when this comes around again, then we at least are aware, so thank you, Tony.
So.
Yeah, I'm working with the school.
Sorry, just, I've always got questions. So what, who's responsible for the last manhole?
The B?
No. You're really making.
Oh.
You get your stat sent, Tony.
So there is a manhole right here where this hook.
It would be all the schools.
And then this hooks and then this goes at an angle down.
So.
To technically on my property.
So because it was existing when it was one property.
Yep.
It still can stay there, but it's the school's responsibility at that point in time. You would wanna dig up at that manhole, go and disconnect your service.
I'll just put some concrete in the hole.
Well, yeah. Okay, so. So, yes, that would revert to solely the, the gym's.
So I have a claimant in responsibility to that manhole or?
Yep. You do, as soon as you, as soon as you disconnect from it, it's not yours anymore, it's, it's, it's become theirs.
Is it technically not like, as it was the school history?
No, school's still a separate entity, they're not city owned.
But it's a city sewer line, right?
No, technically not.
It isn't.
I don't, it's a private service.
Okay, interesting, wow.
Old school.
Yeah, yeah.
That's true, it's.
Yeah.
Like things, there's a lot of things that have changed since then, so, okay, so we're, we're good there, we're moving on.
Excellent. We look forward to seeing your next step on that.
Alright, we're gonna move to lot seventy-four.
Um, we're, um, we, there is no issue to discuss with twenty-four because we have other stuff.
Okay, so we're done with that?
Nothing to discuss, look how quick that was.
That was easy, we're done.
Right, Zach, we're good.
Now, over.
We're good.
That extra week up last, we're good.
Yeah. Good job, Zach, no issues. Do you want me to share this part? Thank you.
Well, it's, it's part of the whole process.
Okay, um, so regarding the school board letter, this has been going on a little bit, um, about what's going on and just some history. Um, Ryan Fodds was kind enough to give some documentation and so after the large um, you know, so we don't have to keep looking at your sewer lines, I can switch back over to our family. There we go, that's a little more fun, it's more fun to look at your school, you know? Um, so there was the big storm that happened July fifth, right? The rain and the washout. So July sixth, um, the superintendent Bob Siddick left a voicemail for Ryan Fodds and wanted to meet to discuss the flooding issues that the school had had. And so Ryan had spoken briefly with the school regarding the flooding issues. Um, and then, um, August ninth, um, Bob had texted, um, Ryan Fodds that, um, oh, that's right, thank you, thank you. Ryan Fodds had texted Bob to alert Kim that during the council meeting, um, Brian Hefty had stated that the school district gave Grant Park permission to dump water on the school's property. And that Brian had also stated that this, um, he was talking about the drainage ditch and then the school was at fault for any sediment and damage done to Murphy's Pond. And so Ryan wanted to be in communication with the school to understand that we are on the same page, um, that we felt it was the developers' responsibility to, um, clean up that sediment. And then, um, let's see here. We actually, Ryan and I had actually met with Bob and Randy here in City Hall to discuss, um, several items. And, um, one of those was, um, we, we did touch on the building permit issue and we talked, we talked about the, um, inadequacies of the development regarding erosion control and what caused the stoppage and then, um, and then we got the letter from the school, so that's the history of that, okay? Um, today, we had a meeting with the, it was a Teams call this afternoon. Um, it was with the Teams, or excuse me, it was with the state DN or the local DN. Um, it was with the teams, or excuse me, it was with the state D N R, the local D N R. It was John, Ed, Justin, and myself, and Andy and Barry, um, to discuss today's.
Responsible engineer with the state D A N, Kelly Boucher.
Thank you, Kelly Boucher and, and Jill Rito, who's the local D A N R, thank you for that. Um, I've been up since five, I'm not, yeah. So, uh, the D N R had come to Baltic today to review the state of the development of Grant Park and Village Crossing in regards to erosion control. So they kind of did a spot check and took pictures evaluated. We do not have that full report at this time, but they're working on that, we expect to have it tomorrow, but they were kind enough to go through the pictures and Jill's, um, results of that, and shared with us some pictures of today's evaluation, okay?
And.
Oh, and we had received this yesterday, this is, how do you say, this is the documentation of the case, do you call it a case, what do you call it?
It's a case.
It's a case between the state D N R and Grant Park Capital regarding the erosion control issues.
Yeah.
So this is the case and all the documentation of the emails back and forth between.
Two warning letters and enforcement action referenced, and then Grant Park Development filed a lengthy response on August thirty-one of twenty twenty-two.
And just remember that this all began June sixth, when the initial community complaint was made.
Well, it was done, that was done in April.
Excuse me.
Sixth is.
When they came, so April's when the initial complaint happened, June is when they came to the city to do an initial review analysis, not unlike what they did today, where they came and took pictures, did the analysis, everything. Then they came back again in July to do a second check, to check on things, to see if there was progress and all of the things. Um, so this would be the third visit, right, is that today's the third visit?
June sixth.
July thirteenth.
July thirteenth.
And now today, October twenty-sixth. And so, um, as we were going through the pictures and we got to the point of Murphy's Pond, um, the state shared with us that, um, the state D N R engineer confirmed that any of the discharge channel carrying surface water into Murphy's Pond, okay? That is def- so Murphy's Pond is defined as water of the state. Okay, that is the state engineers, so by creating and allowing sediment discharged into state waters is a violation of state law. We do have, they did record the meeting, so we have the record of it, I, I wasn't fast enough to, um, they sent me a link, but I didn't know if it worked or not, and I didn't have time to get it done, but we do have it, we'll, we'll release that so everybody can watch it, yeah.
The takeaway is that the school district, even if it did, can't consent to allow state law to be violated by, if the word is polluting state waters with sediment, can't happen.
Which is, is a secondary issue to the letter that we received from the school, because the school's first contention was they didn't, they didn't believe that the city had the authority to impose that on the developer because it was their land, that was their first issue in paragraph one. And then the second issue was that they didn't, um, agree with the, um, that, with our leverage of stopping building permits in order to help right the ship and make sure things are being done for our taxpayers, our city. You know, we as a P and Z and as a city council, we swear when we are either appointed or elected to have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers, to make sure that we are responsibly, both fiscally, environmentally, and ethically protecting the citizens of this community. And so that's what we do, that's why we do it, and for no other reason. And so, um, so once we had confirmation from the state, um, we felt, um, that, that is what we needed, right, that for clarification on the issue of the school.
Can't be passed back and forth between the developer and the school this year. And so, but, but the reason this week, we've worked hard to get all the stakeholders together so that there aren't any more third-party communications over who's supposed to be doing what, and whether things are a violation of state law or not.
So we're trying to get clean, a clean factual record.
And we have an environmental problem that has to be resolved, and Murphy's Pond is a tragedy, frankly, it's a, it's a gem for the city, and it's terrible, and the state engineer is, shares that concern that it's an environmental issue.
There were a lot of other issues that they spoke to, but right now we're specifically speaking about the letter, and we wanted to address our concerns about the letter, and specifically Murphy's Pond and the downfall through the school and the city's property. And the letter that the schools felt we failed to write.
So, and so you all in the public knows what the true facts are, uh, and, and then hopefully, um.
This council has no appetite to play in the land of hearsay. So we want to deal with facts, so everybody knows exactly what's going on, because that's what we're here to do.
Well then, I'd like to make a joint motion then. The city should be, is requiring the developer to make a public statement to both the school and the city split into three parts. One, clarifying that it is the state D A N R requiring the developer to clean up of both the school and city properties and future sediment downflow needs to cease. Two, the developer needs to clarify that the city's intent was simply to invoke their fiduciary responsibility to protect our taxpayers, public safety, and our city's environment. They must acknowledge that the city is neither anti-development, nor do they wish harm on any present or future citizens. Three, the developer will, will request the school to publicly retract their uninformed and false statements regarding the city, specifically referencing their letter. We look forward to you correcting this unfortunate situation.
So we have a motion on the table, do we have a second?
Can I add something to that? Certainly, Debbie, is it feasible for us to?
You need to have a second or first.
Okay, Debbie, you have a question, okay, is it possible for us to also have in that letter from them, like a date they're going to have it done by, like it's some type of a completion date, because it was supposed to be, everybody was saying that it should be done when it's cold out and stuff, so that they would have it completed by December first? I mean, this has been going on for a long time.
Debbie, I think that you make a really great point, because this has been going on since, for over a year, and the complaint was made in April. And then the state finally got involved in June, however, it may be more strategic to have those in two separate documents.
Okay.
John?
I think the state will establish a deadline, um, because they're, they're talking of, in fact, when I talked to the engineer, this, um, gosh, again, the day it is, was it Monday or Tuesday, I can't remember. Uh, she said that they were preparing an enforcement action. And so I thought, well, fine, I mean, if that's, so I, I do believe that that A can be separately addressed, and B, I'm assuming the state, the A ten O is going to issue, uh, some kind of, they're, they're establishing deadlines for other corrections within, with sediment and other, and, and we're going to get more, we'll get a formal report.
Yes.
And is there going to, at some point, be a meeting between the state? That can happen anytime. And, and Kelly, Boucher, Boucher, no, I think that's how you pronounce her last name, possibly could come out.
Answer any and all questions.
John, did they ever, did they ever say why they hadn't reached out to the city?
Well, I mean, South Dakota is a very trusting, very, uh, you know, we, people in South Dakota take a long time to get riled up, because we all believe that everybody is in good faith and they're trustworthy, and when you say something, it's gonna, it's gonna happen. And so, um, un- unfortunately, for one reason or another, um, promises get made and requests are made, and then deadlines pass, and I don't understand why we weren't fully copied on all of this.
Right.
It's, it was really surprising, it'd be, Ed was, Ed showed up on a letter and shoot, and then when I looked at the file, the city disappears from all the communication.
Well, and I, I have to give credit to John, because we have him going in so many different directions, trying to clean up the various things of the city, that somehow he just had the thought, maybe I should touch base with D N R, and that's when we received over a hundred pages of documentation that we had, had not seen all of it, there's much in there we were not aware of. And so I think it's important to know that, you know, we're getting informed, that has to be reviewed. We have to see if there's anything else that we need to be aware of in the interest of our citizens, and John and Justin have been working overtime on a variety of different things, just so you all know.
These are all relatively fixable things.
Yes.
All it takes is the will to carry them out by the developer. There's nothing here that's rocket science magic, uh, it's just the matter of will.
And it's not opinion, it's literally the law.
Yeah, and it's not just this developer, it's any developer. I mean, whether you're in Sioux Falls, Garrison, Del Rapids, it doesn't matter, it's the same, it's the same requirements for everybody, no matter where you're at.
Valley View and Baltic Heights complied with all of the requirements about erosion control. And there were frequent meetings, especially Baltic Heights, where I think because of the geography of the development, there were many issues that were created that affected homeowners. So we had many, many times where Tom Pearson and Monty Gaul, they made innumerable trips to city council meetings, and there, we didn't have a P and Z at that moment.
And then, one other thing on that too is, you know, still, with them not being a hundred percent touched with the city, part of that also is that that is a federal permit, state, I shouldn't say federal, it's a state.
It's a state permit.
It's a state permit, so some of that stuff, yes, it would have been nice to know, but the handling of it is supposedly more so on them, so when things weren't getting done, that's when it come about with subdivision ordinances not being met, and then the building permits being suspended was because this, the taxpayers were paying for things that were not being done in a timely manner and just letting it go on and on and on. So that was a way to halt that, to get things going to get fixed.
Quickly, quickly rather than slowly. And then also remember that in the last meeting that, um, we had regarding, when the school board was kind enough to attend our meeting, um, it, it was clear by the D A N R that they were to reach out to adjacent landlords to make um, accommodations or to make requests to clean things up, and that was, that D A N R request was made in June. Our meeting was in September, and as of September, Bob Cidic had confirmed that the developer had yet to reach them about making an effort to clean up those lands, which was, in my, in my belief, the impetus of the letter, because the school was taken by surprise by this, and didn't understand that it was the developers' responsibility, because that communication didn't happen. Which is why we have the motion to have the developer clean up the situation that arguably could have been, that has been caused by their lack of following the protocol that's requested of them.
And as far as that goes, that also means that that developer was supposed to contact the city about Murphy's Pond, which is city property, and as far as I know with all ordinances and stuff that we've been told, they've never even reached out to the city about cleaning up Murphy's Pond.
There's a legal doctrine called trespass. And if the city wanted to, the city, in my opinion, would have a cause of action in court against the developer for trespass, because there, this is the theory we used in Sioux Falls on the sewer class action. It was trespass, it was at the city of Sioux Falls over, gosh, that, they did nineteen or twenty or twenty-one drainage studies. All public record, and, uh, and the theory we used was the city was so negligent in, uh, in not implementing all these engineering studies, that the nine drainage basins in Sioux Falls were, which were occupied by homes, were actually used as the, that was their flood line. Their flood plan was for everybody's basement to flood and their sewer to back up. So the, the pool, the municipal liability pool paid just shy of two million dollars in that case, and it's all public record, because it, it's, it's a public case, and I was the, uh, lead co-counsel with that case, so this is a serious thing. And it's, it's, it gets to a point where, you know, you, you think about the courthouse. Because when people, when you can't get people to, to engage and fulfill their duties, that's what you do. And so I just want you all to know that I think there's a rock-solid case for trespass. Nobody can consent to have water pollution and sediment in a state-owned water. Trespass on the city's property and ruin the aesthetics, ruin the environment, it affects the fish. I mean, it looks crappy, people have weddings there, they, there's, that's, I've heard Deb Murphy talk about how that's the, a gem of, a gem of.
It's her name.
Absolutely, so, you know, I don't want to turn into Attic Finch on you, but although I'm tempted.
But to bring this back, the whole point, I know, um, to bring this back, the motion on the table is to right the ship. Because right now, we're dealing with a court of public opinion, because we have a public statement out there by a very credible and respectful group of people, which is our school board. And so in order to right the ship, those statements need to be rectified and clarified and corrected. And we feel at this time, it is the responsibility of the dev- developer to shine a light on the truth of the situation and correct and heal the city from the chasm that is between our school board and our city council at this moment. And we feel, and, and more so, the, the, the bad light that the city has been, um, shown in by the hearsay and conjecture that's happening around town because of the letter. So there's a motion on the table right now that we're going, sure.
One more thing on that, with the representation of our city's outlook right now. I was in Crooks today, helping the city of Crooks get our water turned back on. And it's pretty bad when they know from the UPS guy what's going on in our town. That's not good. That is very negative.
So in order to clean and to right the ship and clean things up, we have a motion on the table. It's, um, if I can recall correctly, it is a joint motion to request the developer. Well, we need to vote, and then you can say something. Okay, what do you want to say, please?
We have, uh, discussed cleanup Murphy's Pond. It's, uh, been closed and, uh, uh, agreed upon in our negotiations and months ongoing. Um, we stuck our head out, uh, last, uh, uh, meeting to speak with the school district to come up with a joint statement, and, um.
And we read it.
Yeah.
And we read it.
Can, can we read it?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, read it, by all means, read it. No, you read it, Andy, because you and the school wrote it, not the city.
This was a proposal, this was for revision back and forth. So this was not an attack.
It's not an attack, but it's also not what we talked about, hi Barry.
So would you like me to?
It's up to you, it's your proposal.
For the benefit of everyone else in the room who has no idea, could you read?
Baltic School, Grand Park Capital, and the city of Baltic's administration have come together to solidify common ground and bolster confidence in the citizens of Baltic. Though we have had differences in opinion and interpretation of facts over the past few months, we are committed to come together for the betterment of this town. To do this, we must be pro-growth, pro-school, and pro-development of Baltic. These tenants have guided our collaborative efforts to sharpen the harmonious actions needed to build a better Baltic. Sustainable growth and the livelihood, sustainable growth is the livelihood of Baltic. Each additional incoming family brings more diversity of thought, increases, increases resources to add amenities, improve infrastructure, and provide endless possibilities for the city and school. Baltic needs houses built and sold on Grant Park's development to see the spruce of growth. This mandates a team effort and full support of the city and the school towards Grant Park's endeavors, as well as Grant Park supporting the city and school. Though such statements sound ideal, the citizens of Baltic deserve actions that match our words. After today's meeting and rigorous discussions, buildings, uh, building shall commence as, uh, the city began issuing uh, building permits on Grant Park's two additions, Grant Park addition and Village Crossing. All lines of communication shall remain intact going forward to ensure we foster forward-thinking, problem-solving mindset. This is the best, this, this is in the best interest of not just us, but Baltic and its citizens. And this, the meeting was for the back-and-forth conversation between the parties.
Well, the consensus that I got from the people that did offer me feedback when I sent it to everybody is it fell very much short from what we asked, which was the developer to take responsibility for them not following what the state's requirements were, and to clarify to the school that it was the state that was asking to have them clean up their mess, not the city, and to all. And to also clear the name of the city because we are not anti-development and we are not causing harm to future citizens. And none of that was mentioned. And you know what? You did pro-development, you did pro-school, you did pro-everything, but you didn't put pro-city. And I have about seven other comments on there that's not worth my time. But it fell short, not even close. That's why we have a motion on the table for the letter that we want from the developer to the school and the city. And we have the conditions that we want. And we have a vote now. We have a first, we have a second.
Somebody can call the question.
Yeah, so we either need to call the question or we need to have discussion. Who wants to call the question, which initiates a vote?
I'll call the question.
Okay, we have a question called, we need to vote. All those in favor in having the developer craft a letter for the requirements that Ryan has lined out, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The motion passes. We'll get that to you in writing. Okay, so on to Phillips Crossing and Grant Park Edition. At this point in time, in light of all of the information that we just got yesterday and in light of the conference call that we had today with the state and the local D N R, we have a lot more research to do and receiving the final report and reviewing all the papers. So there's really nothing for us to discuss tonight. So.
Comment on the, on this amount of papers there? Most of that is our response.
We never saw it. We weren't part of any of that communication. And all you've ever told us is how transparent and communicative you want to be. And it took us going to get that from the state, not you volunteering this information. And that information has been in the state's hands since August thirty-first. That was two months ago. So don't talk to me about communication.
Never with you.
You never offered.
You asked for it last night.
You never offered.
You, we, we assumed that you had been in communication with the state, which you have been this week. Am I right?
Deb, may I say something?
Yes, may.
You know, one of the biggest things from that meeting with the D A N R is that there's still outstanding erosion control items that need to be addressed. I think we've been pounding at home day and day and day that those need to be addressed.
And they continue to say that they're giving.
There are some improvement.
There are some.
But it's not all taken care of. You know, there's a lot of easy things, easy items that should have been taken care of. That would be taken care of by the weekly slip inspection reports too. That just aren't getting taken care of.
And let's all remember, this has been going on for a year in our city and has only been checked since April of this year. Go ahead.
I think one of the impacted homeowners has filed a complaint with the state D A.
There's no other anyone.
Okay. And I think there's a suit that's pending or maybe is being threatened.
There's open litigation.
Okay.
We're getting details on all of that. So that way, we need the planning and zoning and the city council to be fully informed on all facts and all documentation of anything involving city assets. And until we have that complete packet, we're not discussing anything further. So if you guys have any other information to offer, then I think now's the time to.
I'll just say this. I had a conversation with John on Monday that was encouraging that we were on the same page.
We thought we were too, until we got that look.
Until we were completely blindsided last night after hours with a request for a bunch of information, which we complied with everything that we could today. Additional information that you didn't have. We contacted the state, we stayed afterward in order to meet with the state. They hadn't communicated to us since August thirty-first. Barry, you're a, you're a transactional lawyer. Back in the day, that was one of the paths I worked for a number of years in banking and finance. I wrote so many opinion letters and disclosed so many material pending or threatened administrative enforcement actions pending litigation, threatened litigation claims. I appreciate that. I appreciate your, your district. I guess I feel that we have, we've been ambushed here today.
By information.
How can you say you've been ambushed?
That, that, please, we've been ambushed every month.
Because we continue to find out.
Information a couple of days, maybe three days before the actual meeting. Okay.
Like the same day?
Or, or the same day.
All I'm saying is our intention today and our response from the email, our intention today in the meeting with the city is to be as open and transparent to move this project forward.
Well, that would be, that would be a nice start.
The reason that we're here has always been the reason that we're here. That is the intention that we have.
You keep talking about that and yet when they talk about information that they haven't been given, you have the audacity to say what you didn't ask.
Hey Deb.
Deb. Please.
I got one thing to.
I'll, I'll throw myself on the sword. I apologize that you didn't get that information in August. I assume the. I had no, no knowledge that you didn't have it. My fault. I'm standing here taking. Over the copy, those Barry. I could have copied. You're right. I made a mistake, John. I will accept the mistake I made. And I apologize to, to this board, to this town, that that mistake was me. Because it shouldn't have been. You should have had.
I like one question to ask you though.
Yes, sir.
I was in that meeting today with the state and when it got brought up with the school property, okay? Your statement in that meeting, and I mean, I'm sure we can find it in there and find it and stuff, when that, they had been in contact with the school. Okay. And then the school sat here in a recorded public meeting and made a statement, Andy was here at that statement, that they had never been contacted. And I know for, like I said, for a fact that they had never contacted the city about cleaning up Murphy's Pond that the state required in that same exact instance.
I think what Ed's trying to say is that.
He's not knowing the truth.
Open communication and transparency has not been our experience to date. And so we're asking you to right the ship. Hey Barry, I called you the day I got that letter. And I said, this is your mess to clean up.
What, you got which letter?
Was it you, Andy? I don't know. I talked to one of you. The minute I got that letter, I said, I'm sending you something straight away because this is your mess to clean up because you need to get it right with the school so their facts are straight. I asked it the day we got the letter. Now you have a motion supported with the full force of the planning and zoning and the council to go get that letter. And we will talk to you once we've received that letter. Until then, we have nothing to discuss. So thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks for coming.
Good luck.
Okay, so because we're still doing all of our recon and trying to get you, all of you, all the information you deserve to have. Yes, sir.
One of the documents we got late this afternoon was, just help me understand what it is. It's about twenty-four pages.
Yeah, the thick.
Of drainage, stormwater. I mean, it basically is a plan that Banner prepared in twenty-twenty-one.
Yes.
Which governs stormwater erosion and it's got, it's got so much engineering stuff in my head.
Or the full scope and I'll ask you guys to give an update. We received information in response for going back and forth on a lot of this stuff. And all those sort of public documents on the compliance memo, right? And so we had fire flow as being one of those concerns and the detention basedness as being one of those concerns and then the erosion control. I'm just going to lump those in for layman's sake for the top three items. We received documents after hours on Monday, requesting that they would all be reviewed by this meeting. Yes. So in between then and now, there's additional light on the erosion control and stuff. And so that's why we're here. We just haven't got through all the documents.
And I will tell you that John and Justin and Ed and myself are spending an innumerable amount of hours trying to do what's right for the city and to stay on top of it. And to more importantly, have all the information so that way you guys can make an informed, confident decision moving forward. Because we're dealing with some very real things that could affect our city as a whole. And we need to make sure we're making confident, informed decisions. So we apologize that we don't have the information that we originally intended to present you tonight. But we need more time. And, and we will get it to you. Whatever is publicly available, we will put on the website. So every taxpayer will have access to that information. We will share any and all information so you have it. And any of your aldermen are happy to answer any questions you have. If they don't have the answers, we'll get them to them and they'll get back to you because we're doing this for the city. Because it's the right thing to do.
And, and gossip should be challenged and pulled out. There's no room for that. This is too serious. This is way too serious.
We're not living in the world of hearsay. Baltic, South Dakota is not going to be built on hearsay. It's not. Yes.
Bear with me a second. Tony Lee, live in town. At what stage of the game to save, I'm going to call it grace. For each one of the parties involved, whether you want to call it the city, developer, or school district, would you not appoint a neutral arbitrator slash project manager?
No. The facts are so clear. The issues are so clear, Tony. It's completely.
Be a second. Just bear with me a second, right? Because the slander or hearsay, whatever you want to call it, of going back and forth isn't helping.
Tony, there is no back and forth. There was a mis.
Tony, I've been here for just three months. And it's just back and forth. Just hear it out because you want it.
Why don't you read this tonight, Tony?
Oh, read it, Tony. Read it. I want you. You're a really smart guy. No, I'm dead serious. Don't keep talking. Just go read it. I want you to read this.
But it's facts. It's absolutely.
This is all engineering stuff.
It's black.
From the state and from the developer.
It's black. And also to answer, we don't need a meeting either because this is.
I've spent almost every hour this week just working on this matter.
And it's the state D N R that is enforcing this on the developer.
Yeah, it's not the city.
It's not the city. But the city needs to make sure that they are compliant before we move forward. So we don't have adverse impacts with open litigation. Erosion, that could be our responsibility if we let building begin again. And we haven't even talked about water pressure and water volume. We haven't even gotten to that yet.
And you can talk to the landowners who haven't been left unresolved. I mean, they were, we told them frankly, I wish I had told them all the file complaints with the state.
But that's actually the slippery slope.
That's why we didn't.
Everybody, all three parties have a slippery slope on this. Baltic wants to maintain a pro-development because I do believe it's in the best interest.
Everybody believes that.
Right? Because that's, so, I'm not, I'm, I'm trying to communicate that everybody should put meat in the game. I'm not saying that there's not right or wrong from anybody, okay? I'm just trying, how do you get the ship going in the right direction?
It's in process and it was derailed by no fault of the city's. And so we are getting it back on the show. And Tony, I will tell you, we are all about pro-development. But you know, we're, we're also about environmentally responsible, fiscally responsible, infrastructure responsible development. All the things that we have asked the developer to do are things that are clearly defined in the subdivision ordinances or dictated by the state D N R. None of this is, none of this is imaginary. It is all factual. It's black and white and apparently very well documented. And so we have done our due diligence to the point that we realize we can't have all the information right now. We can, every time we get a question answered, we have seven more questions because we are dealing with a lack of information, which is an entirely different topic that we will talk about in a different meeting. And so I appreciate your need. I appreciate your need and what you're asking. But this is where we are today. And now we're going to have good faith on the developer that they will do the right thing, right the ship, and get us all back on the right track, that what they should have done the day that letter came out.
So with that being said, one thing, so if if previous administrations would have done what they were supposed to do and everything was done properly, right now, they'd be building houses.
None of this would be happening. None of it.
They, if they wanted to done the stuff up to this date, they won't even have a plaque yet to build houses. So we have to look at it in two aspects here. The first aspect is where would they be at if the previous administration would have had an engineer representing the city to tell them when things were right or wrong, they would have never had a plaque.
If there would have been a checks and balances, none of this would have happened. We would have handled it on the onset.
I suggested, because, so, so what you, all right, again, I'm, I'm trying to, how do we go, right? You have three separate parties. Right? You're wanting to move forward. But what you truly just stated is you guys do have some responsibility in the ship. They have responsibility in ship. And so does the school.
Our responsibility was the fact that your predecessors,
you're claiming your predecessors did not follow the book, didn't follow the rules, okay? That's your meat in the game.
Right. And our job is to right that ship by making sure this is done correctly and taken care of.
It's really broader than that, Ryan. It's, it's called the ordinary and customer. In medicine, they call it standard care. You know, and I could tell war stories, but I won't about Arthur Crenns and what he used to do as an expert witness with not even high school education and construction cases. But the point is that there are well-accepted of well-known standards that are to be applied. Erosion control and managing surface water runoff is so core and so basic to development. And, you know, Jill Riedel came out here and said, wow, there's a lot of dust blowing around. And we're, we're on our second winter, right, on this development? And so, you know, there's sediment that's going into the storm sewers at multiple, multiple locations. Sitting down and, and patronizing each other with platitudes like this letter isn't going to solve the problems.
That's my point.
Well, there, there's only two ways it happens. A, the developer gets serious about this now. Or B, we resort to litigation. Because you can't negotiate with a party that won't do what they're supposed to do.
And that's where the problem comes in. As soon as they can build houses, every letter they send, everything they do, there's one point in there on every one of them. We need fifteen building permits. Well, when we started this, there weren't fifteen lots sold to put houses on.
Which means they're continuing to sell land knowing that they don't have building permits.
That they are in violation of the D A N R now, can they?
They've been in violation since.
Can they even continue building without the drainage that's being fixed in that building?
Well, the fines are up to ten thousand dollars a day.
Per, per, per violation.
So ultimately, it's the hammer of government that.
Right. But what I'm saying, you have, it hasn't even read the book. Is there anything nor the D A N R says you cannot continue.
That, that's up to the city.
Until.
Yeah, it's really up to this joint body to.
Which is why we chose not to continue the building process because we needed the compliance to the very clear laws and ordinances. And like John said, you can't negotiate with someone that isn't doing what their house to do. And so we're just asking them to do what they're supposed to do. That's all we've ever wanted. That's all we've ever want. That's all we ever want from any developer that comes to Baltic is do what you're supposed to do.
And that's where the problem is. Every one of their correspondences, building permits back, building permits back. So if we don't table that and give them building permits back, what's going to make them do that?
There's no incentive for them.
That's your word.
That's the only leverage the city has.
And they're playing chicken with the state D A N R.
I, I do.
Who does that? What rational person does that?
Okay.
So.
Outside the box and.
And, and we appreciate that.
Help. Because, right, you've got, if, to me, I see you get, you guys aren't even in the same state on your thought process on how to move forward.
Here's what I can tell.
Not even the ballpark.
Here's what I can say is we have done everything we know how to to express what our needs are, what we want them to do. And it continuously resonates to the exact same message. Just comply with the laws. Do what you need to. We're not making any, any other demands other than please comply with the ordinance, follow the rules, just like everybody else has to, just like you have to and you have to and you have to. We all have to follow the rules. That's all we're asking.
Here's an easy way to put it, Barry, Tony. You come for a sewer issue, right? So we make you follow the rules, but we don't make them follow the rules. Does that make it good for you?
Here's the stuff going on in this.
So that's all we gotta say, right?
That has happened, right? That does happen.
And it does.
But it's not right.
But this is the future. This is the future of any growth.
That's why I'm saying, that's why I'm saying, because the city does have face value in this.
But we also want our face value to be ethical, responsible, environmentally sound.
I, I agree with you. And I'm just saying, how would you start the wheels moving?
We feel like.
This, this is doing it right here.
Yep.
We're taking responsibility for past mistakes, past overlooks, moving it forward. If we gotta go to the point where we gotta argue and make the guy mad to go finally get this taken care of? Get it done. We're sick of it. We want our city back. Okay, let's move on. Ed, let's move on.
Let's move on.
I guess the next item on the agenda is German.
Do we have more to per German?
Can I ask?
Oh, yes. Who are you by chance?
Jason Pittman. I sat on the same boards you guys are on for many, many years, but John, and so I know exactly what you're going through.
Planning and zoning or city council?
Both.
Both.
Uh, Jason has a construction, yes, background on the.
I got the same, I got a construction background too, so, yep.
I work for the artichoke firm that's doing the school work right now, so. Why I'm here is to your point about the hearsay and things like that. So I wanted to come find out.
Sure.
Um, I, I'm, I'm still not clear if I've heard the answer. So I want to know. This whole issue that you guys have with the developer, which is the city and that's. Terrible plight you guys have to work through, but what I'm wondering is. The, the rumors I've heard is this is the encumbering other development? No, so, okay, that's what I just wanted to. Impact on the school getting a building. Is that correct?
The school hasn't presented any plans to the city.
No, they, they're not done yet.
Okay.
We, and I know that too, so.
Right.
The only permits were only held on Grant Park.
Okay, and that was what rumor I had heard was that you guys weren't allowing any building.
Just on those two developments because they.
Okay.
I'm very glad you asked them.
Yeah, because that's the rumor that I've been hearing and I can't believe that you could encumber somebody that's.
Mr. Pittman, if you ever have a question, call City Hall and we'll give you a very direct answer.
I figured I'd, I'd been a while, so I'd come in. It's awesome to see you.
Welcome.
And all, everything that we want to accomplish is so that future growth. Know the standard.
No, I understand a hundred percent, Rick. But I just wanted to make sure that, that what I was hearing wasn't me.
It was.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
We did.
Thank you for your words.
I guess I would like to say one thing to Mr. Pittman too. Thank you that the council here has even tried to protect the school. Because, um, they did not, Grant Park did not want to clean up. The, um, they did not want to clean up the pond.
A document in here from Brian Heffey stating that he doesn't feel that that's any of his responsibility.
Well, it promises to be at the state and our devil.
They, I know.
We're trying to protect even the school.
So even you understand.
Right, yeah, this is my business too, buddy. So I get exactly what you're talking about. Jason was a fine council member.
I make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
That was Nathan Pachota that did the second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion, that's adjourned. Thank you.
So.